Thursday, September the 26th at 7:05. We're going to have our invocation tonight by Louvin Casanova.
Lord, I want to thank you for gathering this year together. We want to thank you also for our community leaders who service and selfishly of their time and with great values. I also want to ask you send your blessings upon us as we drive home this evening after the meeting. And as we bring all our personal intentions to the forefront of our heart, I would like to pray as you taught us, our Father.
Lord, in heaven, how will be thy name? Back in thy cup, that I may be done on earth as it is in heaven. They will sustain our being great and will forgive us our trespasses. As we forgive those who trespass against us, and give us time to do our mission, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Thank you. We have a step form, Councilman Miller, Councilman Maroney, Councilman Castillo, Councilman Guerrero, and Councilman Rodriguez. If everyone will please stand and pledge allegiance and take this way.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. The flag of the United States of America, the president, one state under God, one and one nation.
This time I'd like to entertain any citizen comments.
Mayor, Councilman, my name is George Gonzalez and I'm here today to address the city ordinances. I live at 926 Sixth Street. And I've been asking Cindy and Monika since about July, this properties. When I spoke to Cindy regarding General Loyes, which I've been asking for years, Daniel Rodriguez and Epi Lopez, the same thing, this is an ongoing thing for years and years and we're working on it, we're working on it, but nothing gets done. Anyway, I talked to Cindy on the month of July on again the property for Epi Lopez, which she doesn't own anymore, but somebody owns it or either. According to the city, someone has to maintain this property and if they do or they don't, they claim this for a lien on the taxes, we've done right according to the ordinances. Well, Cindy proceeded to tell me, the city didn't have any money at that time. Then before I was in the Lloyd property, she told me, well, George, why aren't people helping you? You're retired. Help get some help. Which I say my own property, I don't have to, I would like to help, but that wasn't a good enough answer for me. Then she told me to talk to Monika, but she's a code compliance. I've talked to Monika on several locations and I've got nowhere. You know, this going on three months, I've spoken to her, another property is on Sixth Street, and again, nothing has been done. Monika said she could not own private property, although when the letter sent, it states on inspection of this property, it is determined what needs to be done. Okay? According to the rules. Monika also stated that if the owner's out of town, that there's nothing that she could do. For example, there's two properties there that belong to Hernandez and Torres. That's not my problem. The only piece of land or track or lot, someone needs to mow it, yet again, nothing gets done. Orders require owners to take corrective action within 10 days of being notified of such property not being compliant. And again, the answer again, well, we give you time. How much time do you give? I mean, what is he allowed of time? A year? Two years? Okay? Monika said letters have been sent, but again, I believe, but nothing gets done. So what do we have to do to correct this? For example, what I think, they sent a letter, which is fine, and the work may get done, it may not get done, but nobody ever follows up to see what's been done. The majority of times, they clean the lot, and I can thank you, Councilman Leonard, Mayor, and all they do is put stuff to the sides. You have a big old bowl, a trench again. In my opinion, that's not cleaning it. Okay? There's a lot here on Third Street, I mentioned to her over and over. The same thing, all they did was poking box spleen, filed all the rubbish, all the trees, everything to the side. That's not cleaning it. But no one takes the time to go and follow up and see if the work was done up to far. Again, I don't have no time. You know, I understand that she's the only one that's fine, but she's a code compliance officer, maybe y'all should allow her time to do her job, but she says she doesn't have no time. So no one ever follows through to see if the work is done right. Again, no help. If that's true, y'all need to give her some help. I mean, I don't know, I don't work at City Hall. The property on 928 Sixth Street, which is Daniel Rodriguez, it very seldom gets mowed. Okay? I came again, talked to her. Monika states, she's going to try to find Liberty. Liberty was a tenant that was living there. Liberty is gone. They cut out the electricity, the water, the wage are four foot tall. Then she tells me, well, we're going to try to find the owner's mobile home. That's not an answer. Mrs. Rodriguez, Daniel Rodriguez owned that lot, they rent it, they should mow it, they're the owners of the lot. The tenant is gone, but yet nothing gets done. Mrs. Rodriguez came and went around and tried on her shoulder again. Give me time, I'm going to do it. We've gone through this year after year, year after year, she never does nothing, but yet she keeps up her house and some other property that she owns, but not on Sixth Street. I don't have to put up with that. I mean, that's why y'all are here. I mean, if she doesn't do it, again, the ordinance says after 10 days, you find her. Or you go do what you need to do and you put a lien on the taxes. That's, I've been reading the ordinance, I'm going to read them again, I will be back again next meeting. Dee Davis and mowed Mrs. Malloy's lot, or tried to mow it, I'm going to say, Sunday and Monday. He did the best that he could because there's nothing but junk there, rubbish. It's never gotten cleaned. So the man tried, but still, the same thing. Looks like heck. There's two vehicles there, they've been there for 15 plus years. Again, I've been asking for 15 plus years. Finally, they got rid of the RV, the camper's still there. The answer I got, they don't have a title. That's not my problem. The ordinance says if they don't have a curse, they procure plates or after 45 days, you move them. But again, nothing gets done. All this does is make my blood pressure go up. And I don't need that. Mobile homes, they put mobile homes in town. I can take you right down. It's not underpinned. What's the problem? The problem again, nobody goes and follows up on things, other than they did it. They put a mobile home, you're supposed to be five feet from the property line, 25 feet from the front. Again, you get a permit, whatever, but no one follows up to make sure that that home was placed where it's supposed to. So what's the problem with the city, for the city workers? The ordinance are good, only thing we need to do is enforce them. And that shouldn't be hard to do, that should be real simple. If a person doesn't comply, you do what you have to do. But they don't ride you and ride you and ride you and ride you. That's not right. So again, all I'm asking is for someone to do their job. And I understand we all have work and maybe you don't have enough employees, I understand that. But someone, you can't put a person to the side over and over and over, I'm working on it, I'm working on it, I'm working on it. That doesn't cut it. So I just poke my peace, and I hope y'all can do something for me. I mean, people come over here, they pull your leg, and again, I'm a heart, and you're trying to work for the person, but how long? Mr. Cubiero's a lot next to Finia. I came Tuesday, again, this Tuesday, I asked again, and I asked, who, I mean, who owned that lot? Said Mr. Cubiero owns it. Do you think it's fair for the judge to have a lot there with weeks by foot tall? He may not complain, but he shouldn't have to complain, the city should do something. The answer I got, we sent him a letter. What got done? Nothing. So we're back to square one. Then forget about the ordinance, go away, don't do anything to anybody else. That's all I feel.
Mr. Gonzalez, I appreciate you coming to the meeting and speaking your piece. Because it's not an agenda item, we as a council can't take action at this meeting. But I am going to direct the city manager to at the next city council meeting, put this item on the agenda. In that, there was a council directive to enforce the ordinance. We published an ad in the newspaper, we were going to send out the letters. So I want to report back to the council on how that council directive is being carried out so that these challenges that you were telling me about.
I can add them up.
We, if you can give them to me, I will give those to the city manager and at our next meeting, we will get some answers to those questions. The mobile home piece is another piece that...
See, that mobile home is even abandoned, it lives there. But again, the owner has to shred that lot. Liberty is gone, but she, only thing she says is not our responsibility, it's the renters, the renters gone. She owns that lot. It's simple.
Thank you, George, for bringing it.
We thank you, gentlemen, Mayor.
Any other citizen comments? We're going to go on to open business. Consideration in action to approve the minutes for the couple of days, obviously eight. Who did that one first?
Mayor, we can hear some of the members from the other pages, just something here.
Can I have a motion? Can I have a second for the...
I'll circle it.
Second, I have a motion by Councilman Guerrero, second by Councilman Loyes, all in favor?
Aye. Stand.
Stand. Okay? All opposed? Three, two. Two, three, zero, two. Okay? Now, the minutes for the 15th. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I'm looking for the meeting of the y'all with the 15th.
Can I have a motion by Councilman Guerrero? Can I have a second?
I'll circle it.
Second by Councilman Loyes, all in favor?
Aye. Stand.
All opposed? Motion carries, four, one, zero. Been a long day. I'm waiting to change your name. And everybody else, let's take a vote on that matter. And can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the 22nd?
So motion.
Yes, a motion by Councilman Guerrero, second by Councilwoman Castillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, five, zero. And now we're going to go on to items. Two presentation and updates, our first will be a financial update by Laura Flanders.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens. Hopefully I can call out enough. This is the items for the July 2013, for the new district report. At this time, of this month, we've actually passed a second amendment, only on the water sewer fund. It was passed on July 11th, so the reports that you see, that has a current budget column actually includes that amendment. During that amendment, we broke out the water department, or the water fund into waste, into admin, wastewater, and water, for better accounting in the future. So this is, every month, we kind of go through the same process. We have the general fund, financing sources as of July 31st, 2,707,434. Again, we've talked about how your property taxes, you collect very, very small amounts in each month. In June, you only collected 400, excuse me, 4,591. Sales tax for the month was 115,000, excuse me, $55. It's an increase of 9,581, or 9.59 compared to July of last year. As we've been saying, we've been seeing about it, that same percentage increase is continued over the year or so. Franchise fees, again, we receive those monthly, and July was actually received in August, so it doesn't show in the report, so excuse me. The general fund expenditures are 2,807,192. They're generally been holding as much as we can on expenses, and we have had some vacant positions. So at this point, July, you have, most of your, we have a lot of bills that are quarterly and, I'm telling you, they're monthly, and we have a few that are semi-monthly, they're semi-quarterly. So at this point, we're looking, we had 83, if we were exactly on our eight months, it'd be 83.33% spent, and we are on at 74.45. So again, the largest piece of that is the vacant position. Really, all of the departments are just on their generals, they're just doing day-to-day operations. The street maintenance tax, excuse me, the street department, there is a line on located in there for street materials that are not eligible to be reimbursed from street maintenance tax, which is a different fund. And so we'll start seeing that will be increasing because of the Malloy's project. So that'll be, it will be offset, because we will be getting money back from the EDC. And again, the swimming pool, July, starting that, you know, it overflowed enough for almost two months at that point, so we started to see the expenditure increase. The debt service fund, which also has different property tax, like I do, the debt service fund, we, again, our payments are due in March and September, so there really was no activity for the month of July. You'll see all the remaining payments in August and a few that actually were posted in September. The, again, the water and sewer fund, again, we did the amendment in July. So now, as of July 31st, the financing sources were 1,287,947. Of this, water residential and commercial revenues were 835,900. The sewer residential and commercial total, 334,626. And this is actually the second month of the water sewer increases, the way, even though we did it in April, it took until that long before we got seeing extra bills go out. So it's the second month, and we can definitely see a difference as we just did going again in September. The rates are going to help out in the future for capital. Utility fund expenditures, total of 1,65,534. That's only 66.27% of the budget. Again, some of that is because of some capitalized items we had during the budget amendment, and they haven't been spent yet, so it's a little bit lower than at the 83. And they do have, still have, we are a small vacancy to that. Also have the sales tax report that was given and the fund balance report that we give every month. There's questions? And I'll add the details up. Actually, we print, we didn't print the detailed progress this time, but if anybody would like it, we send it by email. It's pretty spectacular, I don't know if it's...
Fifty-seventh page.
Yeah, this one was actually smaller, because we were a little less worked as well.
As I had the opportunity, I got this report yesterday morning, I had the opportunity this afternoon to go through. I have a couple of questions. I know that in the audit, last two audits, there was a concern about cash deposits or how the cash was being kept on hand. As I go through this detailed report, I'm not getting a feel for when we're making deposits. Have we changed that policy so that the cash deposits are made on a routine basis from City Hall to the bank?
Yes.
What frequency is that now?
They're supposed to be done every...
I saw an alarming figure when I looked at July bank charges, and then the balance, $788 for bank service charges?
Unfortunately, that, the way Wells Fargo, it's actually, there's several components, but they do earnings credit, so you earn interest, and obviously, we all know interest is not really high. And there's charges for everything you do, every check that's processed, every deposit that's processed, and they, they all have, and we go out for your, each transaction has a penny or a nickel with all kinds of different charges. And it, that's about typical for the size of our account. It is a lot, honestly. I wish you had some other options, because there are other banks that don't charge cities any fees, unfortunately, we don't have one of those in this town.
Are employees getting paid direct deposit or that is, or their checks have been being drained out to them and handed to them?
What do you want?
The employees. Is that part of the fees, as to why it's so high, having...
Now, every single item that runs through the bank, every check, every AP check, every transaction, ACH transaction, they all have different fees that are charged, and they keep track of them all. And so every type of transaction, every type of deposit, depending on how much cash, depending on the checks they process, they all have different fees.
Lauren, the question is, do we have direct deposit for city employees?
Yes, yes.
We do?
But it charges as well.
But they charge for that?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's not bad, unfortunately, that's, that's, it's the amount of AP checks and the amount of deposits that you did with the mortgage.
The next piece has to do with, or my last piece has to do with cell phone. I know I don't have a city cellphone, I do know the mayor has a city cellphone, but I see $715 for cell phones for the mayor and city council for the month. I see two different accounts, a Verizon Wireless and an AT&amp;T Mobility. That seems very, very excessive. And then when I go further down into wireless telephone, for the event center, where we have one event coordinator, or what the title is of Ms. Martinez out there, and one laborer, we're spending $336 a month for between Verizon Wireless and AT&amp;T Mobility. This seems very, very excessive. Why for one employee at the event center do we have two different services for cell phones?
I don't have a detailed progress, I need to look to see if that's more than one bill. Also, we changed providers, we went through the state contract with Verizon, that's why we switched phones, we did that in July. So there are some process bills, because we were paying off the old bills and then the upfront of the new bills. And it is a lot cheaper rate through Verizon, because again, it's with the state. So we're getting the state contract, so.
How many cell phones are amongst the city council members?
I don't have one on my cell.
There were phones that were still, we still have at AT&amp;T, because they were in contract in the past. I've been with AT&amp;T for a while, we were not on the state contract. I was not here, I don't know, so those were still there, you couldn't just cancel them because they are. So there, there were phones that were not, that were actually in the office, they were not handed out. So we have now, at this point, with the new contract, with Verizon and the state, being on the state, we can cancel any phone at any time without any extra charges. We can add a phone without any charges. All of the state tax franchise taxes as well are taken off the bills that were on the AT&amp;T bill, so. We actually may, it may seem there may be extra here, but it is...
Yeah, Lauren, so I don't have any combos?
What?
I have the combos on cell phone.
The entire bill is a combination, it's a little bit different than AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T was set up like one phone, like kind of like your home one or your family one.
I'm not arguing who has a cellphone, I'm concerned about the amounts that we're spending here. You know, I spent 30 days in Europe and had an extended service plan on my phone, and it was less than $400.
Verizon was for the beginning of this new contract, so there's the phones, small phones, there are charges for the new phones as well. So I have to go back and pull the exact invoices, and again, I'm sure that it's two months, it's the end of our billing with AT&amp;T, and then the addition for the new with the broad.
I really would like to see the numbers on the cell phones, because that seems very excessive to me.
Yeah, the new contract is much better.
Mr. Miller, in answer to your question, some of us have never had a cell phone. I know for myself, I've never had one.
I had one, I guess, the first year, and then when they said it was, I guess, a couple of minutes over, something, I said, you know what, I don't want anything to do with this phone, and I could save the city. But I don't think we have that much, maybe the mayor has a number.
And we went with the state.
I had five years, I have about six years. No, that's not what he's asking, but I'm just saying, I don't know about the deal.
Now, only then it's difficult to handle two phones, a Friday one and a...
I do pretty well.
Thank you, Lauren.
Okay, we're going to go on to items 2B, which is presentation and the solid waste contract amendment ordinance.
This one, this is kind of a combination of several different items. We talked about this during the budget a little bit. We have a contract with Republic of South Ally that began October 1st, 2012, that goes through September 30th, 2017. The part of the contract talks about the CPI increase, we did receive that letter in August, we know, we mentioned it in the budget book, and that we were going to have to come back and talk about that rate increase. We've got also, after Terry Golling is here, and he's asleep for just a minute, and then if you have anything you want to talk about, possible other options that you'd like them to look into, maybe for, pick up, miss you to brush. Again, it's just more to get you some information, we're going to have to bring these items back again. Also, I'm going to talk about the amendment to the contract that came apart, painted about because of the school district and some changes, just general changes. So when we get to that, we'll talk about it. Again, we're not doing union nights with the presentation, we did information. And then also, I've worked on some spreadsheets that we'll talk about on the rates, so. And Terry?
Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
I don't really know what you want to talk about, I understand the CPI, that's part of the contract. Listening to the first gentleman that spoke earlier about the abandonment, brush them all and stuff like that, I think they offered up some special pricing for that person, if we need to go by there and help them, help y'all to see that they're outside the contract, we'd be happy to do that. I think we also, if I remember this correctly, we also added some, the city's own, did a very good job, I believe, some of the service levels that are in the contract are in that, for instance, the restaurant, if the other, from two times, we leave an hour, two and four to five, and that, if we have to work out, so we just, for five, we covered that all.
What's in the contract right now with the...
What's in the contract right now with, for a book, a book called a, I call it a.
What, twice a year now?
It's three times a year.
Three times a year, uh, with five. On a monthly basis and on a, on a, three times a year, on a citywide basis, you do it peanut. But a monthly basis, we each one every change.
Correct.
Is it the yard or?
Not yard.
There's only the yard.
Yes, wherever you have to put it, you can put it anywhere.
Yeah, but like, years prior, before yours coming in, that would be a, a whole cleanup for you to put on curbside.
Um, no, they didn't say that. Um, they had the, uh, I watched them, they did park somewhere in town. Maybe if I'm there, people would reach that, so they'd be making up years and years ago, but.
What I'm saying is, you used to come to the curb, you know, you have a structure grower, and it's one or twice a year. This comes, I think, before the peanut truck.
We put, we put taxi in there, if, if somebody wants a special truck, definitely. If they want, uh, somebody would put a couch and a mattress out there, we'd be happy to like.
What I'm saying is, like, maybe on the next, on, on next contract, or what, what would it take? To, to manage something like, say, okay, you would provide that service once a year.
You betcha.
How much or what, because there's people sometimes that want it to clean up.
Correct.
And, and then at the same time, they'll come all at the same.
I'd be happy to, if you wanted to, you can do it on a call-in basis, you can, we could provide you prices on a call-in basis. You can do it, uh, on a, on a citywide basis, you can do it any way you design it. If you judge me, the director defines that.
I don't think they were ever discussing y'all when y'all first, we didn't discuss that.
Yeah.
If, if we can get some pricing set up to possibly to where, you know, maybe twice a year, I guess, you know, to.
Bulk pickup?
Bulk pickup, you know, in the curbside, not at citywide.
Is there a limit that you like to have on that? Is it twenty yards, two yards, three yards?
Well, I think it's probably going to be pretty.
It's going to be pretty much no limit on that there. Uh, I think the best option, at least as far as proposals from, from Republic, would be to look at one and two times a year, curbside bulk pickup, as well as giving us the call-in price for bulk pickup.
Correct.
You know, we may not be able to afford to do it twice a year, but we can offer that service to our customers for an additional fee in, in the same way you would offer it to us, and I think that pricing may give us some options.
Because I think, like, right now, they have it to, I think it's for enough to where he, he can, it's a, it has to be bundled up and tied in a certain way and so forth, and I think it's a little bit.
Well, you're doing three times a year bulk at the sewer plant, and do you want to sacrifice some of that to do the door-to-door? We can sure talk about that, if, if we have a, I'll, I'll talk about, we'll tell.
You know, I, I think giving us options at this point is going to be the best, best thing. You also brought up something that I think we need to look at in the way of abandoned lots or, or block cleanup. If this is a service that, that Republic can offer the city to do in those instances where a homeowner is not responsive and the city has to take action, instead of using city crews to do this, if this is a service that your company can provide, we may be able to utilize that and add initially no cost to the city, or initially it's going to cost the city money, but those dollars would be reimbursed to the city by the property or in the way of a tax lien or in the way of actual payment.
We, we have, I don't know how many, I think we have seven of them, but they're gravel truck with a big alarm on there. And we, we, we thought, I think I did keep a pass for that, but I'll, I'll be here.
Yeah, that's a separate item, because I think that, that's something that's going to come to fruition.
I don't know if they, if they, I don't know if they got to you, but I, I had called in a complaint from, from one of the, the truck drivers that went to, to go and dump one of the dumpsters, and, and there was a lot of trash that was up on the top, and got pushed off onto the road and, or in, into the business and.
Man, that's a, I could talk about that for five hours about, some of our irony. We had some guys actually die climbing up on the ladder of the truck, and then he fell down, hit first bucket. So we have an issue, you know, with bad trash, guy didn't want to throw away a, the trash, and he went to dump us inside. And some days, when it's all loose in there or something like that, and the wind blows the case, but we used to have a driver where they'd climb up and bring their can off, but, but they're, I'm, I've been, that's three years, you guys have been hiding that. So, uh, it's, it's kind of tough, but I think, uh.
Well, he had a, he had actually climbed up there, and instead of dumping it into the, into the dumpster, he dumped it off of the hunch of them, into the, the, the property, but anyways, I think it was that, if that incident got fixed, because the next time around, it was closing the lid and it would make.
God, you're not, I'm, I'm in touch with the city on a daily basis, uh, on a daily basis. The result is no longer with us, but, uh, I'm in touch with the driver. I still, I'm still, I've been following my guys around and making sure to keep my honor in the city. Uh, and so I'm still doing that, but I'm also still contacting and participating in every dang event there is. You'll see me at every event, I'm there, I'm watching, I'm listening, I'm talking. It's still my city too, so I'm, I'm trying to do the best I can at all times, and I want to help out as I can. So, uh, doxie, if it's gotten near, there's going to be incidents on there, my fault and, and customer's fault, we should try.
On the side of that, I appreciate you, you know, and, and all that that you do for the city and, and donating of dumpsters and, and special events and so forth.
You're a vessel, and we've, uh, we're involved with the chamber.
Correct.
Boy, they don't force me into lying stuff now, I'm going to have to go on the third meeting chat. Uh, I'm getting involved every day I can, not only me, but, uh, other people are there. With my comptroller, this is both the county and the one at B and R, but remember, we're going to be there, wouldn't you? Just hold it my way, dude, hope you stay there for all time.
Yeah, if there's a, for example, if you have a trash can, and somebody puts a trash can, it's mixed to it, y'all don't.
Uh, you know, that's a.
It doesn't happen very often, but there are times in the city.
If, if it does, Simon's the driver that drives the city, the really good guy. He works hard to, to really get things in control. I can speak with him, what, what he does is one of the ongoing thing that happens every week for that, it's up every time. Because that's a, a truck go this way, he's got to get out and on some traffic, but anyhow, if it's not a historic item that's happening, he's supposed to grab that, but, uh, if anybody, any customers, extra help, my cell phone is available anyhow. And I, I, I know it's a big city, and I have lots of city to take care of, but if there is work, I'm going to go, I'll help anybody.
Yeah, I know sometimes I've been late, putting mine out, and garbage come back twice.
Yeah, well, uh.
Send, send the other, on their property, depending on, as you're saying about that house being torn down. If we do it, if we do it, or if we hire somebody, if the city employees do it?
No, no, we actually hired, contracted someone to, to tear down the house and clean it.
And, and how was the, the payment handled?
Unfortunately, because the property is, is, is surrendered all the way to taxes, there's no way to put a lien on it. It's, it's, we're in limbo.
Well, you know, you know how to help, and I'll do it. I understand the directive of giving some, uh, twice a year bulk schedules. But I, I can get you some pricing, but, uh, we, we do things called performance, and these performers are where they calculate everything. Uh, bulk, the this or that, and because it's one thing, so they'll leave specific questions on the answers before I can give all this. This is not the all-day, and there's some other ideas.
Well, that's the city manager coming in on Tuesday next week, and, and I would encourage you to get with her as, before you finalize your proposal, to get some of those details.
Correct.
Iron that.
Okay.
Would you?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Take it, gentlemen.
Yeah, this is just, we're just trying to get everybody information, and we didn't get, some levels, we didn't get to do this on everybody. This amendment, um, that she's passing out, this is just a little bit of housekeeping in nature for the contract we currently have. It's not part of the CPI that we just handed out, this amendment has nothing to do with the CPI. Um, there were a few things that weren't listed in the contract specifically that we needed to address. I'm going to go with the number one on the amendment, it says page eighteen, exhibit C, section two, commercial collections, uh, extra cart. In the original contract, an extra cart residential was addressed, but extra cart for commercial was not. And so, and because of that, they charge us the same amount, only we as a city do not charge the same amount. So, we worked with Terry in last month or so, and came up with the same difference, although it's a residential and extra cart. So it would be seven fifty-four that they would be charging us, and so that had to be added in this amendment that we'll bring back to you. The, um, number two, I'm talking about page nineteen, municipal services, at the time when this contract was done, again, it lists all the city locations, and the dumpsters that we get included in our, our service, if we do not pay for the four A, or to the Florinville Community Senator, Center was not listed. At the time, they, they thought it was part of some, the four A, it's actually the city building, so they fixed that. So we're no longer being charged. And at this point, we're no longer being charged, but we still have to give this amendment included. Number three is what he was talking about, he did, when we were meeting with him before, there had been some councils that had mentioned wanting to have bulk trash picked up, uh, curbside. And so that is what this rate is, again, this would be the customer would have to pay for this. Um, they follow the on-call bulky trash service, and they were saying that the rate would be seventy-five dollars per request plus twenty-five dollar yard disposal bill directly to resident by contract. So, again, that's just one, was an option that they, they framed it, there are more, we didn't, yeah, like he said, there's lots of different ways they deliver it. But that would give people the ability right away, um, if they still wanted to pay for that. Again, that's at the curb with the gravel, if you need to. And then, number four, these are again, just housekeeping, we didn't have all of these options for dumpsters and additional weeks in the original contract, so those were put in there. And then number five, a few months back, this, uh, the ISB was wanting to get the rates that they get through a co-op. Due to the way that the contract was worded, and then Ally has exclusive franchise, we have to do an amendment to include the ISB. So that's number five. So again, once we, part of the next council meeting or two, we will, someone will have to give us money now.
Can I ask a question? On A, number one, that seven fifty-four, is that from an additional commercial part?
That's the second, yes. So in other words, if you have, you know, you have one, we call it cart.
And that's the total amount?
The, the number, the first one. The, uh, no, the first part is twenty-three, excuse me, it's twenty dollars per month. Currently, that, that Ally part is not what we charge customers, but what Ally charges. But the second poly cart was left out of the contract, so we're just being charged twenty for the second part. And we are, as you're going to, I'm going to hand out some other stuff, you're going to just take home and do some looking at. We are actually charging less than what they are charging us. And due to all the rates, there's, there's a lot of talk about that. All right. Because it's confusing, again, there's a lot of different prices, there's a lot that we have residential, commercial poly carts we get from dumpsters, one yard or twice a week, two yards, and there's all, all the different options. We kind of talked about this several times, I think, budget, and I think it was brought up during the, um, audit, that there were some issues with the trash rates. So we got to have to do a new ordinance as well for our trash rates, that's what the rates we charge the customers. So these spreadsheets are trying to show the diff, what, where we are currently, some different scenarios of how we can cover the CPI increase and some of the changes that are going to have to be made. So, I want to put kind of both out right now. Again, what we're going to have to look at in the next meeting or two is what fee are we going to charge for like the admin, for the processing of billing, for the billing through the city? And currently, the rates that are in the system, in the current billing system right now, have been there since two thousand and nine. They were not changed when y'all went with the new ally, track. So, the, one, there's some spreadsheets that are stapled together, and the very top says, City of Florinville refuse rates current. And I'm not going to admit into all the numbers right now because it's a lot of numbers, and you're going to look at it. You're going to want some time to look at it. But this particular, the very top spreadsheet is snapshot as of today. This is the September billing, we took the count, which is on your far left-hand corner, or the far left-hand column. And the next column says current billing system, that's the system, our utility billing, that's what we charge customers. The next column is the ally contract, the current contract we have. And the next is difference, and you can kind of see, if you go down, depending on which one it is, there might get small loss, or we have a small admin fee, or a little bit, really not much of an admin fee at all on, um, the dumpster. So as you go across, you have the current monthly administration fee percentage, what it turns out is a percentage. And our current budget will, is okay, we would break even just about. But the CPI is not included, so the second page, um, is with the CPI that they've, um, given us. The CPI increase was five point five four percent. So again, the same, uh, information, the ally has changed the CPI, and it shows you that we, where we would, when we build, we're going to make money and lose money. And on that, the very bottom, there's a difference, the very bottom right-hand corner. If nothing was changed, if we know we have to change, we know there's things we have to address, we would lose forty-five dollars off. So obviously, we have to address the CPI, of course, and some of the other issues. I included three scenarios, A, B, and C. There's lots of ways to look at the different scenarios, we were just free, again, we could probably go a hundred different scenarios, but I just went through and did three different ones, you can look at and see the differences between the admin fee of doing it all straight across the board, twenty-one percent, or being at slightly more, uh, more for commercial rates. And that's what B, B and C are. So again, it's a lot of numbers to look at, I don't want you to try to make decisions or anything, but I make sure to not. The next packet that we handed out, um, because I know that's of importance, is how those changes would affect the customer's bill. So, uh, I did, again, because there's so many different options on dumpsters, it's a lot of numbers. But again, I did share A, B and C, and what, um, the change the customer would be. It's a lot of numbers, and the new city manager, maybe y'all can come now in the next council meeting, to get some information, to ask questions, maybe to let her know if I can work on other scenarios even. So, obviously, we, we, so we did talk about the legend, believe it or not, the CPI was going to have to be addressed as well, you know.
When is the CPI taken, taken for ballot?
October first, so it'll be the billing that's next month for us. It's weird though, too, because our billing is from September fifteenth through, the billing we just, the billing that just went out is from August fifteenth through September fifteenth, so now we have, we're split, so this next billing, it'll go, we don't address it pretty soon, we'll, we'll leave it. But it's a lot, I said, by no means are the scenarios, I, I was just trying to, I, I've worked with some numbers and looked at lots of different ways, and, you know.
Thank you, Lauren.
Um, did you get the bill, we were just having questions on the garbage and how they were being billed by the, I have to say, the carts.
What, did we even figure on what are you talking about?
What do you mean, did the bill?
On the bill, where it had different amounts?
They don't show, but that number did not mean the yard, no, you kept a little bit of the dollar amount on the bill, on the ally bill.
Whether it was one cart or two carts, it picked up twice a week or one.
Yeah, you can't, that, that little, it looks like you, you would think that means two times, but that's not what it means. Yeah, you can't, that, that little, it looks like you, you would think that means two times, but that's not what that means. So you have to.
Now we're going to go on to item three, A, consideration and action to permit extension on electrical permit for Oscar Garcia, SUP at twenty-two twenty ten Street.
Mayor Council, we have here, uh, Oscar Garcia, at the address to twenty-two twenty ten Street, was granted a special use permit on September twenty-ninth, two thousand twelve. According to our ordinance on chapter one fifty-three, point zero six six, special uses, it indicates here that a building permit shall be applied and secured within six months from the time of granting a special use permit. However, that the city council may authorize an extension of this time upon accreditation by the zoning administrator. We had Mr. Garcia come in, um, to pull the permit. It was issued on March twentieth, two thousand thirteen of this year. It expired on September nineteenth, two thousand thirteen. I, um, spoke to Mr. Garcia to let him know that his permit was coming to be expired. And he was telling me that he, um, wasn't able to get Phelps to go out there and hit the holes to start on this project because apparently they're backlogged. And I do have a letter here from Phelps, dated August twenty-ninth, addressing to the city that the Floridale Electric Light Power is in the process of providing electric power to this mobile home park located at twenty-two twenty. Um, work should be completed early two thousand fourteen, signed by the line design technician, Patrick, um, Holschek. So, um, typically how this works is Mr. Garcia, during any of that time the permit was issued, if any work was done and he wasn't going to make it to September nineteenth, um, he has a permit clerk was, would allow him.